Middle East and throughout the world, I just would like to ask everyone to keep our armed forces here and abroad in their thoughts and prayers during this time. And also that Monday night, we have the Tigers playing for the national championship. And go Tigers, and hopefully that's a victory for us. Thank you.
I'd like to remind everybody, please, that today is National Appreciation, Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. So tonight, say a prayer for your local law enforcement individual, not only today, but every day. They play a major, important role in keeping this city safe. So thank you very much for law enforcement.
Do we have any other intentions? Pastor Randy Craighead from Church of the King is going to do our prayer today.
Let's bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, as we gather here this evening on the ninth day of January 2020, for the opening session of the council, we are soberly reminded from the scripture in 1 Timothy 2 to pray for our governmental leaders. The scripture says, "Therefore I exert, exhort first of all that supplications, prayers, intercessions, and giving of thanks be made for all men, for kings and all who are in authority, that we may lead a quiet and a peaceful life in all godliness and reverence, for this is good and acceptable in the sight of our Savior." As we pray for our leaders, the scriptures tell us that we, the populace, might lead quiet and peaceable lives. I know this is the heart of everyone in this room and even those beyond these walls. Here in this first month of a new decade, we pray for this city council as they embark on a courageous journey of legislative opinion, conviction, and rule while seated in these chambers. We pray for strength, wisdom, and courage. Father, we pray for their protection, protect their minds, their emotions, and their spirits. Undergird and guard them with your grace and your mercy and your goodness and your kindness. We thank you for their leadership, their character, their integrity, emblems that have hallmark their lives and persona. May those virtues be shining beacons of light and hope and distinction of their leadership throughout their tenure on this council. And Father, we thank you for the privileges we enjoy living in a country where its government esteems and upholds democracy and genders free speech, guarantees due process, acknowledges our inalienable rights, supports the freedom of religion and civil liberties for all. It's with this prayerful mindset and reverential context that we lift up these faithful servants to you this evening. May your spirit and anointing rest upon them as in the days of old, when the great law giver Moses cried out to you, "If your presence does not go with us, do not bring us up from here." And Heavenly Father, we ask that your presence permeate the lives of each council person, these chambers, and this great city. May it ever be so. And in humility and prayerful adoration, we offer this prayer for these servants and representatives of the people's choice. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
And now we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance by the Boy Scouts. Could the Boy Scouts turn around and face the flag, please? Thank you.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum this evening. In accordance with Council Resolution Number B-14550, please be advised that all cellular telephones, pagers, beepers, and other devices of this nature must be deactivated or silenced throughout the council meeting. At this time, we will entertain resolutions, motions, and other items from the floor. The council clerk would like to add a resolution temporarily suspending Council Rule Number 11 of the Rules of Organization, Business, Order, and Procedure of the Council of the City of Kenner and rescheduling the Kenner City Council Agenda Deadline to Tuesday, January 21, 2020, at noon for the council meeting of January 24, 2020, due to the Martin Luther King holiday. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to object to us adding this to the agenda this evening? Seeing none, council members, please vote. Motion passes seven zero. Under the consent agenda, we have Item 1, Approval of Minutes, the regular council meeting of December 20, 2019. Item 2 is Approval of Alcoholic Beverage Applications. We have none. Item 3 is Approval of Bingo and Public Gathering Applications. Item 3A is Application Number 2200-20, City of Kenner District 1 to hold a public gathering on January 20, 2020, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. for the purpose of a Martin Luther King parade/program on various streets in Rivertown. Item 4 is Correspondence, Reports from the Mayor, C.A.O., or Department Heads. Item 4A, at the request of the administration, a report from Mayor Zahn.
Mayor Zahn?
Thank you, Council President. Back on January the 2nd of this year, the Code Department started off right away doing a code sweep in District 3 with the help of Councilman Hayes on Tammy Drive, actually it's District 2, I'm sorry, help of Councilman Segur. Tammy Drive, Taffy Drive, and also Hans. Total violations were seven, warning violations were four, no court summons. Then we went to District 3 with the help of Councilman Hayes' office, 1,600 blocks and 1,700 blocks of 42nd Street. Total violations, 34, warning violations, 23, zero court summons. Then we went back into the borderline of 3, 2 and 3 to 3,200 blocks to 3,400 blocks of Arkansas, California, and Arizona. Total violations were 26, warning violations of 22, court summons were one. These numbers are a little high when you get into the 1,700, 1,600 blocks of District 3. The Tammy Drive and Taffy Drive and Hans was kind of low, but as you see, we do have some consistent problems in there. And Councilman Hayes, I know you're getting ready to do some more things there with some no parking signs. Excuse me, I know you've met with Romelli about the garbage situation. These are things that are consistent in that area and also with you, Councilman Segur, in the 3,200 block, 3,400 blocks of Arizona, Arkansas, and California. It's just the consistent work we have to do. I got to credit Mr. James Muhammad, Ms. Molly McGinnis, for the work they do with the Code Enforcement Department. As you see, three code sweeps have already been done in the early days of this new year. That is them getting right back to work right after we were away, after City Hall was closed for a few days because of the holidays, the way they landed. So I appreciate the work that the Code Enforcement does and also each and every one of you all with the council. Good news that we have is that when we talk about sales tax, our numbers for December of 2019 are in. We are up 5.3% over the same month of last year. When I say last year, I mean 2018, for the year of 2019, December. For the year, that is 6.7% over for the whole year of 2018. That is remarkable numbers that is showing what we're doing with economic development is moving forward. We'll have some more announcements on economic development very shortly after some things are confirmed. You know, we had the Hotel Motel Study. The Retail Study was presented to you all, I think, right before we left for Christmas. You see the work that we're doing through economic development with our consultant, our coordinator, Mrs. Candace Watkins, what she's doing along with Kelly Hahn, the whole Economic Development Board. Everything's working in the right direction. And today, we finally cut the ribbon for Salad Station. And I'll tell you what, that is a big asset to the City of Kenner. I know that's something each and every one of us have been waiting for it to come. I know each and every one of you all get the questions on when is that coming, Salad Station? When is this coming? When is that coming? We keep getting those questions. We have no control over that. But if you listen to the Salad Station people today, whoever was there, and I think it was two council people that were there, they were quick to tell you that the City of Kenner is phenomenal to work with. And I think that's a lot to say about this administration, this council, our departments that are handling those things, making sure that our businesses are welcoming the City of Kenner. And I think it was 106, is that what I said today? The 106 ribbon in three years? That's a lot to brag about. Please brag about it, because as you brag, people want to come here to the City of Kenner. These numbers continue to go up, and there's nothing wrong with these numbers going up. And when you hear vendors like that saying that they're happy to be here and working with the City of Kenner Administration, Council, and departments is easy, that's what we want to be known as. So we're doing a good job. But again, we don't control when these businesses open up. Salad Station, I know George is hearing it about the Club for Fitness. That's, it's getting there. I mean, it's coming. We don't control that. Which leads me to my next thing. We've heard also about what's going on with the old movie theater in District 4. What's up with that? Well, I'm happy to tell you today, the pastor who was here that George invited to do the prayer is actually one of the pastors at Christ the King Church. So while he's here, we're going to take advantage of him coming up and telling us the progress that he has made. But it's not our fault when businesses or establishments don't make quick enough progress. And I'm sure he can share with everyone the holdups, but also the future of that site that probably should have been demolished, that they've actually taken and they are turning into something that, Pastor Randy, I want to tell you on behalf of myself, and I know the councilman of the district, and all the council, and our chief of police, we're happy that you're here. We understand things take time, and if you could just give us an update, and thank you for doing the prayer, but if you could give us an update, we'd be glad to hear that. So I'm going to yield to him, Council Chairman, if you don't mind.
That's perfect.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say this, different what you said about Salad Station. We're not Salad Station, but we offer, we do offer spiritual food, so. But anyway, I just want to say this, and on behalf of the council, particularly George Branigan, Council, I mean, George Branigan, this council, this city, the planning, the zoning, has just been an absolute breeze for us. It's been so easy to work with, very accommodating, and I can call George at 3 o'clock in the morning, picks up his phone, and then we've had lots of conversations, but there's been, there's always hiccups along the way. And, but I'm glad to announce that we're planning on opening Easter, you know, 2020, and we're very excited about that. And so we're glad they didn't demolish the building because we're actually renovating it. And it's exciting for us, and we're investing $12 million into the City of Kenner, and we're very, very excited about that. It's going to be an 800-seat auditorium, and we look to have three or four or five services there and hopefully have 2,000, 3,000 people there one day, but we know we'll open up with at least 1,000 or 1,500 people there. And that'll be a lot of people eating at Copeland's and Zia's and McDonald's and Olive Garden, all around that area, and Salad Station, too. Yeah, so we're very, very excited to be here and to be a part of this community. And I was talking to councilperson Krista McKenney, and we were talking about the value of churches, and that's the thing we want to do, is we want to add value to this community. And we just believe that everything is going to go up from here. We're excited about the new airport going in, we're excited about the mall, we're a part of the mall system, I guess you could say. And we just believe that businesses are going to go up from here, and we're very excited for the future of Kenner, and that's why we're here. So, thank you all so much.
Thank you, Pastor Randy. That's all my report. I thought it would be a great opportunity, Councilman, to work him in while we were on the subject of new businesses and how our sales tax are doing, because what he says with the surrounding area, surrounding businesses by him, I think you're going to see an increase in these numbers.
Well, and I just want to thank Pastor Randy for coming to the City of Kenner. It solved a lot of problems for us, and as you know, we are happy that you are here. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I believe Councilman Segur has his light on.
Thank you, Council President and Clerk. Just a bit of a tag on what the mayor said today with the Salad Station. The gentleman that owns it, Mr. Scott and his mother, and then this is a franchise location, so the two owners of the franchise, both articulated very, very clearly to the mayor, myself, that of the 24 locations they have in Louisiana and outside of Louisiana, that this is by far the smoothest city that they went through the process to open a business. They were very, very thankful for the smoothness of the administration and go into perhaps planning, code, whatever departments had a hand in it. But they took that time to clearly articulate that to us because this is what they do. They go out and open franchises, and they deal with a lot of governmental agencies in those areas where they open them, and they wanted to make that clear to us that Kenner was the smoothest that they had been through to open a location. And then on another little tidbit, when we finished the ribbon cutting, the owner came back over to me and says, "Do you understand, out of all the other cities that we've done, we've never had a welcome ribbon cutting like this before." So they were ecstatic to see what the city did today to welcome them to the city. So to them, it meant a lot to have that ribbon cutting ceremony. So as the mayor touts his 106 ribbon cuttings, it's not just a number or a grandstand. This is promoting the economic development of this city and these businesses that want to come to the City of Kenner. So not only are we, as a city, very proud to have them, when they see us happy and proud to have them and help them flourish their business, they are very happy. So again, administration, thank you, because without y'all, these businesses probably would have had a much harder time in not come here and then certainly spread the word to their friends in their other areas how easy and nice it is to work. So I'm thankful for the smooth operation and the enthusiasm that the ribbon cuttings bring to a new business to welcome them and let the public know they're here.
Thank you, Mr. President. My comments are relating to Pastor Randy. I see he's gone. And just to say that, I've had the opportunity for the past three years to work with Pastor Randy and the Church of the King organization, particularly Mr. Josh Holliday at the Orleans Parish Sheriff Office. I am, I work with the offenders from the sheriff department, have worked with Josh Holliday, the coordinator at the sheriff office, and, you know, just, I guess, it's just by the grace of God that because of our relationship now, it has transferred from working in New Orleans to the City of Kenner. And some of the things we've talked about has been bringing in the church into the community. We know physically they are going to be located in North Kenner, but God has no boundaries, nor do the people that work in the ministries should have, should have boundaries. So we have talked about things, about introducing them to the community within South Kenner to be able to, for them to support, to become indoctrinated in, to support wholeheartedly. So I look forward to Church of the King, Pastor Randy, and all of the organizations that they bring, because they bring a plethora of things that I believe will be supportive to the City of Kenner. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Hayes?
Following up on Councilman Mike Segur's comments, I just also want to thank Mike for working with the Khan family as much as he has. You know, this is a true picture of when a citizen, corporation, local management, when we work together, what really can happen. You're going to see some additional exciting things happen at that mall. And again, I want to thank the Khan family, their true partner with the parish and the city in making all this possible. So thank you.
Yes, sir. That will conclude the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot on the consent agenda. Councilmen members, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero. Under the Public Appearance Agenda, we have Item None, Public Hearings for Final Passage. We have none. Item 10 is Opening of Bids. We have none. Item 11 is Reclassification of Zoning. For Final Passage, we have none. Item 12 is Other Ordinances for Final Passage. We have none. Item 13 is Resolutions and Motions by Council Members. Item 13A is a resolution amending Rule 11, 12, and 13.1 of the Rules of Organization, Business Order, and Procedure of the Council of the City of Kenner.
Motion by Councilmember Segur, seconded by Councilmember Branigan. Councilmember Segur?
Thank you, Council President. This rule change get, and I'm going to be cordial and say, just questioned on procedural things, on how legislation is filed from time to time. And those questions would run the gamut of being illegal, improper, and subsequently, our city attorney, whether it was Ms. Lee or Mr. Edward now, would render their legal opinion, which they are obligated to do to us as well as the administration, on how we conduct our business and are we legal. And they continually made the comment that we are legal, but it seemed to always cause this confusion with some people as to procedures not being legal or proper. So my intent to resolve this and find some common ground or some mediation in between to not have these continual discussions and accusations. So meeting with the city attorney at length on researching public records law, things that govern how government agencies shall operate their business meetings, brought us to this point to say that, well, we have this confusion appears from a filing, a rule that says we have a Monday cutoff filing, and then there's a Wednesday cutoff filing, and then there's state law which mandates that every governmental agency in the state shall post at a minimum 24-hour notice of their agenda. And that posting is to be done publicly by posting it generally on the outside of the building in a bulletin board type thing that we have, and then sending the mayor, chief, council members, directors, the agenda. When these rules were written, or when the laws were passed by the state legislature and they created the open meeting law, we didn't have the technology that we have now. So I know in some cases, all you got was the posting on the outside of the building, and interested parties would have to congregate there to read those papers that were posted on what's the agenda. Thankful to technology, it's evolved to what we have now. And no offense to Mr. Al, who don't have a computer, but we can use a computer to put out the notices through publishing them on the city's website, sending them out as emails. If you leave an email address with the clerk, she has created a group, and everybody that has done that will get that posting as soon as she's completed her work and sends it So when we hear that we're doing something wrong on a regular basis, it does cause concern to say, are we? What can we do to not do this? Or what can we do to ensure that we are right? So because of our rules, 11, 12, and 13, having different and somewhat conflicting information as to publishing of our agendas, the common ground that I worked out with city attorney and then discussed with all of my colleagues was we, initially, the language says, on a Wednesday at 10 o'clock is the cutoff for all legislation. Every single piece of paper that is to be on an agenda shall be filed by that deadline. There would be no other acceptance of anything if it came up some way, shape, or form, except for the other exclusion that state public meeting laws allow, and that is from the floor. And as you saw tonight, we did have an example of that, where something needed to be done, and the Public Records Act allows if there's a unanimous vote of all council members present, then it can be put on the agenda from the floor. So that still prevails also. But the, being able to have a clear understanding that a deadline is the deadline, not this day or this day, was the intent. Now, the 10 o'clock on a Wednesday was to clearly meet the, what the state legislative public records, open meeting law, I'm sorry, Open Meeting Law Act says is a minimum of 24 hours. So that's where the 10 o'clock deadline for Wednesday was initially put in. From comments from some of my colleagues and obviously from things that they've been working on and hearing, they asked, well, the Wednesday, the Thursday meeting, there's at least just that minimum slightly over 24-hour publication time, but on the Friday meetings that we have, it does allow a neighborhood of 48 hours. So with that discussion, we came to an understanding that let's change the verbiage in this legislation, and I'll introduce that amendment in just a second, to move the deadline for a Thursday meeting to a Tuesday at 10 o'clock. Now, both meetings, whether it's a Thursday or a Friday, will have in excess of 48-hour publication. Now, the next thing is, this publication is the agenda that's going to be heard at the council meeting. And if anybody looks at our agendas, you will see that in the neighborhood of 90% of things that we entertain are ordinances. And those ordinances have their own built-in process, and that means you file it, what's called for a first reading, and then it must sit, some cases two weeks, some cases 28 days. So even though it's filed whenever, what we have now or what this will propose to do, those issues still have the additional two weeks or 28-day layover to be looked at, scrutinized, look for flaws, look for changes that happen anyway. So moving this deadline to Tuesday or Wednesday doesn't affect that at all. It clearly just says, here's the deadline for filing for these meetings, and then the other procedures kick in, and it could be a two-week deferral or a 28-day for those ordinances to be voted on. So at this time, if Clerk will read my motion for amendment?
Yes, sir. Rule 11, we will change the wording to read, "The necessary copies of every proposed ordinance or resolution shall be furnished to the clerk of the council by 10:00 a.m., two days before the date of a council meeting." And then Rule 13.1 will read, "The clerk of the council shall not accept any ordinance, resolution, or other item or topic for inclusion on the agenda after the deadline established in Rule 11." So that's the two amendments.
Thank you. Our motion?
I second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Segur, seconded by Councilmember Branigan on the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment? Let me clear your queue, please. Councilman Segur, do you want to yield to Councilmember Wilmot to open on the amendment?
I think I've already covered the reason for the amendment was to allow for that action. That had been requested.
Okay.
I just wanted to simply ask if you can repeat the change, the first change?
Sure. Rule 11?
Yes, ma'am.
Instead of it saying noon on the Monday, it will say 10:00 a.m., two days before the date of a council meeting.
Councilman McKenney?
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Council President. I appreciate Councilman Segura working with us to change, to change the deadline, but I do think that as it is, being at 12:00 noon on Monday gives us the more ability and more time to actually read over and ask questions, and if we have anything. So I think, I believe that we need, we should keep it as is, so I'm going to vote against that amendment.
Councilman Member Hayes?
There was a lot to follow. Mr. Rapio, would you give us your comments on this?
The proposed rule changes make it a lot simpler and easier for the council in a certain way, in that all of the, anything to hit the agenda is due on a single day as opposed to potentially two separate days. It actually will produce an agenda that gets published a little bit earlier, considering the supplemental agenda. It kind of splits the difference in between when the regular agenda would be published in a potential supplemental agenda, if there's anything to end up there. This certainly complies with the issues of the open meetings law, which requires any agenda for a public body to be published, a minimum of 24 hours beforehand. These proposed changes come with the recommendation and approval of the city attorney's office. It keeps us legal and in compliance with the, with the open meetings law. It clears up confusion that is in the council rules at the present time, because the council rules talk about, in one place, a supplemental agenda, and then it says that the agenda is to be published, actually on two separate days, calling it the agenda. So this clears it up that there is a single agenda, and that they will, assuming you all vote for it, clears it up to be a single agenda that complies with the open meetings law, puts, gives everybody adequate notice of what will be on the agenda, and it, I think it actually simplifies things.
Thank you, Mr. Rapio. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilmember Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'd like to thank Councilman Segura for his, for his work looking into this. But as, I'm going to, I'm going to just say that I myself, I think it is, it is productive as a city to always try to be progressive, to the point where we are doing things better, even if we did things before that is not deemed progressive today. And change is hard sometimes for people to, to accept. Change is good. If you don't change for certain things, then, then you die, in a sense, when you, when you change. But on, just like Councilwoman McKenney said, there's a difference between progressive sometimes and being overly aggressive. And I think it is always important for all of us, myself included, to change things or to adjust things or to revise things that will make us better. And I think that is the opportunity that we all have, and we all should be held accountable for. If it will make us better, you can call it change, you can call it progressive, you can call it what you want, but change for the sake of change is not always great. That is just my personal opinion, my personal mantra. So like Councilwoman McKenney, I believe the way we're doing it, it does two things. It gives everyone a chance, time, it gives us a chance to circulate information throughout the city, it gives us a chance, even the council on Wednesday, because that is really for us to be able to submit things that sometimes come up, which I think is, which is great to be able to have that. So because of that, because of just to change it, I will not be supporting this ordinance. I, I think the way we're doing it, I have not heard enough to say that we should change, and that's just my position for today, 2020. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
Mr. Brown, are you speaking on the amendment or the resolution?
I wanted, I actually want to speak on the, the resolution itself. I do oppose the amendment, but, but I mostly oppose the, the resolution with or without the amendment, and I can save my remarks for later or go into it now, whichever.
Well, because we're on the amendment now, so we're going to have to wait for you to talk on the resolution.
I'll wait, sure.
Okay.
Any further discussion on the amendment, councilmembers?
Mr. Teft?
I don't need an hour.
Okay.
Councilmembers, please vote on the amendment. Motion passes 4-3. Councilmembers Wilmot, McKenney, and Carroll are opposed. We are back to the original motion as amended. Any councilmembers want to talk?
We're on the, the actual?
The resolution?
Resolution itself.
Yes, as amended.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Wilmot?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I wanted to chime in on the changes on, that are made by Rule 11 and Rule 2, Rule 11, and Rule 13.1. Even with the amendment, it moves the time back and it makes, changes the deadline to submit the proposed legislation, so there's actually less time. If we keep it as is, of course, we have more time, so I think it's, I don't see the need necessarily to, to make any changes to Rules 11 and 13.1. I think it impacts the public in a negative way, and it impacts the council in a negative way. We currently have ample time, and I think we ought to keep it the way it is. I think it's where it needs to be. Also, Rule 12 is being deleted. Rule 12 simply is our supplemental agenda. Having the supplemental agenda is a council power. We're taking our own power away. This is, this is incredible. This is the, the part of the legislation that allows us to file our own legislation, and we're stripping it out. So I, I don't understand that, and I think it's, it's wrong for us to do, especially this body. The positive is that it does make things simpler, as, as the city attorney pointed out, but not all processes need to be simple. The way we've done it, I think we're accustomed to it, the way it works, yeah, can be confusing at times, but it, 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 it works. The process gives the public and the council the time necessary. Why not keep Rules 11 and 12 and 13? Why not just keep them intact and unchanged? Why are we making these changes? To me, to make these changes, it's simply not good government. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Also, one last comment to, we've heard many a times, well, I've heard many a times since I've been on a council, we are trying to adjust or change because one municipality is doing it, one parish is doing it, one city is doing it. Now, I've never been an advocate of that, because we are the City of Kenner, and we are sometimes, we'll have to stand out and do things differently than other people. So I never, I never followed that line of, of reasoning. But I would like to ask the attorney, based on the greater New Orleans area, would this make us different in, in this way earlier? Or would we be in line with the other cities pretty close to proximity to Jefferson Parish and the City of Kenner?
Councilman Carroll, the only one that I can count, comment on specifically because of personal knowledge is the parish of Jefferson. Currently, the parish of Jefferson, and it was its policy or council rules when I was there as the deputy parish attorney, they published their agenda on a Wednesday before their Wednesday meeting. They also published a, what they called an addendum agenda, which is similar to your supplemental agenda.
Mm-hmm.
And that was published on the Tuesday of the week of the council meeting. So they split their agenda and their addendum agenda. However, unlike what occurs here every time something seems to be put on the supplemental agenda, there was no objections by anybody in the audience to anything on the supplemental or their addendum agenda. And in fact, their addendum agenda on a regular basis tends to run an additional seven or eight pages of resolutions and ordinances. I, I think part of the problem here is that the, that we have run into on a regular basis, where things either at the request of the administration or at the request of council members have been put on the supplemental agenda, and people complain that we didn't have enough notice, we didn't get it in time, we weren't able to read it. And what I think everybody is missing on that issue, though, is the, is the way our agenda works, is that nothing, nothing except for certain resolutions, and not even all resolutions, but certainly all ordinances that get put on a supplemental agenda or on the regular agenda, as Councilman Segura said, for first reading, so Item 16, which is where something new is going to pop up, is there for first reading, and is not in there at a time when the council is going to take action on those items. They're there for first reading, and they will lay over a minimum of one, if not two meetings, depending upon the subject matter of the ordinance. Resolutions normally won't lay over unless there are a change to a council rule, then it has to lay over at least one week before it gets voted on. So the complaints that we have received from certain, from, from certain members of the public, when things get put on the supplemental agenda, or on things that are going to first reading, not anything that the council is going to act upon. So these changes then just move us to a single agenda, whether it's, and it puts everything there at one point in time, it will then have the layovers that are required, it's, again, items on, items that are contained in Section 16 of your agenda are not voted on, not discussed, not acted upon by the council on the meeting that they come up. Everything else in either of the earlier items that will, you all would be taking action on, on any of your agendas, on any agenda, will have appeared at least once before, when it was first put up for first reading, so it is not something, quote, "new." But what this does is simplify the issue for the council and for the public. There's a single agenda that they have to look for, they're not looking for supplemental agendas, nothing else can come up unless it were to come from the floor, which of course, the open meetings law allows for. So again, from the city attorney's perspective, this simplifies life a little bit. We have a single document that we have to make sure that gets published properly so that there is proper notice out there. We're not worrying about two, although our council clerk is extremely competent in making sure that things get published when they're supposed to. It just makes our life a little bit easier. We're working with a single set of deadlines as opposed to multiple set of deadlines. So again, from the city attorney's office, this is a, a, a council rule change which will make life simpler. It removes the potential argument that we continue to get almost every time we publish something onto the supplemental. We won't have that argument. We shouldn't be publishing things, there's no reason to miss the agenda deadline. Now you'll have a single agenda deadline for everything to be on. And, and again, it would be, so I can only count, comment on Jefferson Parish. I have not gone and researched what any of the other municipalities do. I presume most of them probably have a, a regular agenda and a supplemental, because things do, that's the way, the things do at times come up, and you, you have your supplemental. But this is, I think, an attempt to simplify, streamline, and remove the arguments that things are being improperly brought before this board, this, this body, which has never been the case since I've worked for the City of Kenner.
Thank you, attorney. I appreciate that, and please don't take no offense to this, or for that matter, any attorney in the room, don't take any offense to that. I only asked the question, who? And you gave me the, the attorney's spin, and I can accept that. But I just wanted to know, were we in line and synced with other municipalities? Now, it would be unfair for me to cherry pick this without really doing a, a real assessment of different places, of the few that I know. We are more in line the way we are now, most of the city. So without going into names of them, the parish being one, because they do it on a Wednesday, then they have to file it on Wednesday. So I just wanted to know, would we be in line, or would we be outside of that, the norm of others? So for Jefferson Parish, we would be different than Jefferson Parish in that sense. And like I said, it wouldn't be fair, because I haven't done an assessment of that, but that's what I wanted to know. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilmember McKenney?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I, I know I was against the amendment, and as, as you would imagine, I am, excuse me, I'm also against the changes. My, I believe that, you know, this is something that's, I asked some questions about this, is something that's been in place for over 20 years. That was when I was, you know, in college. So I think that changing things that, that aren't really broken, in my opinion, I know people have expressed some confusion about the supplemental agenda, but I think the supplemental agenda gives the council an advantage to, if there, if there are any last-minute things for the council members that we, to put that, put that on the agenda. But that's something that we use sparingly, so giving the, giving them the ability to do it, to share it with the public and share it with the council members, so we have adequate time to ask questions, to do our research. If, the only thing that I would be in support of, honestly, is to actually make it longer and actually give it a week in advance, which would be in line with Jefferson Parish, and, and I don't think that, you know, we have the, the fortitude to do that at this point. So I believe in the strategy, if it's not broken, don't fix it, so. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. And I just wanted to shed a little light on it. Basically, I've been here for 18 months, and I have heard a lot of complaints about stuff going on a supplemental agenda, and that's why this is being done. The bottom line is, you're going to have, you should have enough time with 48 hours to review the agenda, look over it, and do your homework, and do what you need to do. The majority of this stuff comes from the first readings, which you have two weeks earlier anyway. So I'm in support of this legislation.
Councilman Branigan?
Thank you, Councilman Branigan. I, I agree with your comments, and as the discussion continues on this, we're notified as soon as the agenda is available. I'm speaking for myself, I immediately go get it, I print it, I start doing homework on it, I try to get it all knocked out that same day. If it's 48 hours and not 72, I, you know, we may just have to work a little harder and, and do what we're supposed to be doing. So I, I think if this does away with the supplemental, which seems to be a major pain for people, so be it, and I, I think this is, this is good. So, thank you.
Mr. Brown? You state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Richard Brown, 824 Sessions Lane, Kenner. And I'm also president and citizen for Better Kenner. We oppose this rule change, and I do personally. As Councilwoman McKenney said, if it's not broken, why fix it? We think the current system is not broken. It's been this way for the 20 years. I've been coming to council meetings, and I think it works fine. I think the problem with the supplemental agenda, which some cities and parishes have and some don't, it's not that there's a supplemental agenda. The only times that, that I have complained about the supplemental agenda, and to my knowledge, that other people have complained, is when things such as a couple of meetings ago, the proposed changes to the fees being charged for recycling, when proposed ordinances were filed on the supplemental agenda in blank, just by title, with no ordinance attached, nothing to read. That's the problem with the supplemental agenda. As, as the city attorney correctly pointed out, we checked with, I think, seven, actually by now, it's more than seven, but we sent an email to the council members stating we had checked with seven surrounding cities and parishes regarding their procedures. Now, right now, Kenner's rules call for the, the agenda deadline to be basically 70, a little more than 72 hours prior to the meeting. Council meetings used to always be on Thursday, now we have one on Friday once a month. The deadline is, is noon on Monday, and the agenda always gets posted online by sometime Monday afternoon. That's three days prior to the meeting. That is the bottom, the bottom edge, the lower end of what we found to be the norm around the parish. Jefferson Parish has published their agenda a full week in advance. Harahan's agenda cutoff is Friday for their following Thursday meeting, so their agenda cutoff is six days in advance. They have no supplemental agenda. Their agenda is normally posted online by Monday afternoon for a Thursday meeting. Their agenda is normally posted online by Monday afternoon for a Thursday meeting, which means it's online at least three days before the meeting. Gretna posts their agendas online by 6:00 PM Friday for a Wednesday meeting. That's five days in advance of the meeting. They post it online. New Orleans posts their agendas by midnight on Monday night prior to the Thursday meeting. That's at least three days or earlier. They always have it online by midnight Monday. St. Charles Parish gets their agendas to the council members... Let me back up. Their council meetings are on Mondays. They get it to the council members by the preceding Wednesday, and it's online for the public by noon Thursday for the following Monday's meeting. That's five days in advance. Baton Rouge has an agenda deadline of 10:00 AM Friday for a Wednesday meeting. That's five days in advance.
Mr. Brown? Three minutes.
Lafayette has their agendas in the newspaper by the Friday prior to the Tuesday meeting. Everybody we checked with requires...
You, Brown, your time is up.
I urge you to defeat this. The rule's not broken, let's leave it as it is. Thank you.
Mr. Teft?
My name is Greg Teft, and I live at 3720 West Loyola Drive. I'm gonna put just a little bit different spin on this whole subject matter. One is that, yeah, I'm one that's complaining about supplemental agendas, because to me, you would think that, you know, when the agenda's coming up, you should know what you need to put on the agenda, but y'all have trained me very well to that now I know the supplementals are coming up. So, I haven't complained for a while, and it's now I accept it. I think some of the gripe is not about the time that we're having. The gripe is the conflict between the charter and the council rule, as what Mr. Brown brought up about not having the contents, so to speak. That's where I think the energy needs to go into. Not change the timeframe of the agenda and how we're now proposing it, but to put it more in line with the charter, which the charter is the governing body. But right now, it is not, because the charter says one thing, and council rules says something else, so it does kind of create some confusion. And that's what it does, it's just confusion. So, I'm opposed to changing the time, because I don't see where... You know, to me, I like, the more transparency we have, the better. That's how I look at it. And transparency is giving me the time to do my homework, so that when I come up here, I don't look more foolish than I already do. The other thing is, again, to go back and just make the charter and the council rules work together, and I think that will solve some of the problems. And that's where I think the energy needs to be. I am opposed to changing this, because I don't know how y'all could have time to discuss it, understand it. I know I wouldn't have time to reach out to try to get answers why we're doing something. And I'm gonna leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teft. Mr. Morella?
Al Morella, 4260 East Loyola Drive, 5th District, 48 years. I'm also opposed to this resolution. I never questioned the legality of it, because the open meetings law is like y'all stated, 24 hours it has to be posted, okay? But I look at it in this perspective, it's a courtesy to the public that all of you all was elected to serve. That's true, I don't have a computer, I digest it when I come here. That's what I come to these meetings for, okay? But a lot of people do pull up these agendas, and I think that they need to have time to digest these resolutions on this agenda and make their plans accordingly to come down here and discuss whether or not they oppose to it or they support it. And I want to say this to the public in saying and making these comments, anything on that agenda, any resolution, anything that affects one part of this city affects all of us. So, somebody might pull it up and they might say, well, hey, man, this resolution don't affect me. Yes, it does. Anything, anywhere in this town affects all of us. Anybody got any comments, any questions? Thank you.
Motion passes 4-3. Councilmembers Wilmot, McKenney, and Carroll are opposed. Item 13B is a resolution ratifying the appointment of Kentonopolis to the City of Kenner Civil Service Board in accordance with Section 8.02A7 of the Charter of the City of Kenner. Mr. Chairman, I've received a request for a one-meeting deferral.
Okay.
I have a motion by Councilmember Segura, seconded by Councilmember Hayes on a one-meeting deferral. Any discussion? Councilmembers, please vote. Motion passes 7-0. Item 13C is a resolution ratifying the appointment of Michelle Snow to the City of Kenner Civil Service Board in accordance with Section 8.02A7 of the Charter of the City of Kenner.
I have a motion by Councilwoman McKenney, seconded by Councilman Hayes. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes 7-0. Item 13D is a resolution authorizing the placement of temporary signs on Kenner public property advertising a barbecue festival hosted by Patriot Nations Men's Club Incorporated.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hayes, seconded by Councilmember Carroll. Councilmembers, please vote.
I believe Councilmember Hayes has his line.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I'm bringing this forward tonight. This is a major happening that's gonna occur at Lake Town, January 25th, Saturday, and January 26th, which is a Sunday. This is the state national championship barbecue cook-off. What this is, is we will have on that weekend, just a little over two weeks from now, over 50 barbecue teams competing for the state championship. And it's necessary that we put out some signs to advertise this, and also I want to thank the head of our recreation department, Chad Pittfield, for his hard work in bringing this to the City of Kenner for the first time. Again, state championship, you'll be seeing these signs, so please, we'll also talk about it. We have one more meeting before that weekend on the 24th, so again, please, everybody put this on your calendar, it's gonna be really something special. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hayes. Motion by Councilmember Hayes, seconded by Councilmember Carroll. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes 7-0. Item 13E is a resolution temporarily suspending council rule number 11 of the rules of organization, business, order, and procedure of the council of the City of Kenner, and rescheduling the Kenner City Council agenda deadline to Tuesday, January 21st, 2020, at noon for the Kenner council meeting of January 24th, 2020. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. Councilmembers, please vote. One more?
I have a question. So, with this new rule change, what is... Do we really need to allow this?
No. Well, if I can't...
Okay, my screen's locked up.
Well, I was just gonna suggest, City Attorney confirmed, this change has to lay, has to sit over 17 days, so this comes up before that...
Motion passes 7-0. Item 14 is items removed from the consent agenda, we have none. Item 15 is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item 15A is summary ordinance number 12,644, an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from Bonna Venture Incorporated, and an amount not to exceed $5,830.80 to purchase ARFFF foam in accordance with telephone bid number T19-2726 for the Kenner Fire Department.
I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes 7-0. Item 15B is summary ordinance number 12,645, an ordinance revoking ordinance number 11,610, and accepting the lowest response bid received from Pennant Shop Incorporated to supply flags in accordance with bid number 19-1581, an amount not to exceed $15,000 for the Department of General Services.
I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes 7-0. Item 15C is summary ordinance number 12,646, an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from Consolidated Electrical Distributors Incorporated, doing business as Nodico Industries to supply electrical supplies on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid number 19-6514, and an amount not to exceed $200,000 annually for the Department of Public Works.
I have a motion by Councilmembers Segura, seconded by Councilmember Carroll. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes 7-0. Item 15D is summary ordinance number 12,647, an ordinance accepting the lowest response bid received from Lewis Trailer Sales Incorporated, in the amount of $5,070 to purchase two cargo trailers with a ramp in accordance with telephone bid number T19-2724 for the Department of Parks and Recreation.
I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes 7-0. Item 15FE is a summary ordinance number 12,648, an ordinance ratifying an emergency purchase for the panel system, tabletops, pedestals, and chairs at Esplanade Recreation Facility in the amount of $37,289.98 from the Han Company utilizing state contracts 4400013451 and 4400005781 for the City of Kenner Department of Parks and Recreation.
I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Carroll. Councilmembers, please vote. Oh, sorry, Greg. Greg?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna be supporting this information, but there are a couple of questions, one that I always ask, because this, what I believe will be going in a temporary location in the mall, is that it's not going to the mall?
Wait, 16E? 15E? E?
E, yeah. So, it is going...
Just for clarification, that's not a temporary location.
Well, it is a location, so that's part of my conversation.
Okay, I don't want the public to think it's like we're just using that spot temporary. We're gonna use that as long as it's successful.
So, right, and that's part of my...
Okay, go ahead.
I'll get to my point, but it is going to the mall, the materials that's being purchased. Correct. Right. So, that's where it's going. I always ask that, when I use the word temporary, it's because initially when we started this process, it was presented, I guess, to me, on my understanding, that it was temporary, that we were gonna just move one section of the recreation to the mall. Now it has transferred into other parts moving. So, now we've moved, we've done this, we've moved in that. So, you know, I myself, and it may be just me, just like, we'll be able to want to have some type of plan to know exactly where we are with this. Are there gonna be more purchases required coming down the road? I understand sometimes things come up unexpectedly, but we should have some type of plan to be able to give to us to see exactly what will be the end move for this move, that I was assuming was temporary. Now, I'm hearing it's not temporary, but are we gonna be spending more money to support other ventures or venues in this particular spot for the recreation department? And I would like to get, if we don't have the plan today, I would like to get that to show us step by step by step what we've done, what we're gonna do, and what we're trying to end up to.
So, we're talking about two different things, and I know Ms. Foshee's gonna jump in here in a minute, and I'll let her finish it up. But the gymnastics, we moved that with council approval because of the lease. I notified the council, you were not at the announcement of the ISIS parade. I don't think you were.
Probably not.
But I met with each one of the council people three at a time to inform them that we had to move Recreation Department there. I'm pretty sure, and I'll let Ms. Foshee do this part, you were informed that we were making that move of the Recreation Department because of some other issues that we had with the building that they currently in, they were currently in at the time.
Yes, I was informed. Ms. Foshee and I have been talking...
So, you know about that.
A number of times, yes, I knew about that. About after the initial statement about just moving the gymnastics, then that came about after.
Right, and this is not to sound derogatory towards you, right? But I needed y'all's approval for the lease. I don't need this council's approval to move a department. But out of courtesy, because I keep an open, transparent government with you guys, I informed this council three at a time, and also you were informed by yourself, by Ms. Foshee, that we were gonna have to move a Recreation Department. I know there's a little group on Facebook that's making some comments about, you know, why wasn't the council informed? It's totally absurd. One person on Facebook is saying that a councilman told them that they were never informed. I haven't had a chance to address you with it yet, but I don't think that's the case. Each and every councilperson was informed of this move of the Recreation Department for some health reasons, that we had to get them out of that building. And the building, just so the public knows, is the old building that used to be by the break tag station. That building is in a lot of disrepair. I think in one spot, they had some, maybe in Mr. Jimmy Dennis's office, which he was moved immediately, had some mushrooms growing in the building. That's probably not really good for his health. So, we made some decisions to do that. I made those decisions as the mayor of the City of Kenner, but I did inform each and every one of these council people, including yourself, that we had to do that. When I see the comments and I hear the ridicule about that, were the cubicles... Was the council told about the cubicles? Yes, you were, because you had to do the emergency purchase for it. But I just find it really odd, and I'm not directing this toward you, but I just find it odd that some members of the public only question those cubicles. We purchase furniture, which you know, and y'all approve it, we purchase furniture for each and every department throughout the City of Kenner. I don't remember anybody ever asking a question about a purchase on furniture or any materials we need for any department. You have things on this agenda, you're getting ready, you just approved some things for the Fire Department. We always approve things that you have to approve for each and every department. It just seems like since we've moved to the location of the old Old Navy site, it has not become a positive thing with a select few. I want to credit Ms. Jolene Spell and Mike Spell for being one of the biggest advocates, Kenner residents, and biggest advocates of this move that Chad Pittfield came to me with, the Director of Recreation. And before I even did it, the first councilperson I called was George Brennan. Then I called the two at large just to let them know, this is something we need to do. And you were consulted also, because we were pulling something out of your district, and you supported that 100%. These are the things that we do every day that you all approve, but just because it's in a different location, it's become some type of a problem. But if you go talk to the spells, if you go talk to some other people that are going there, and they see the... And I'll call Chad up in a minute, because Chad knows the numbers better than me. But the increase in participation, the increase in the money that's coming in for this spot, and recreation being right there, it's been nothing but a positive thing. And I think some people are a little irritated about some of the comments that I've made, that I always say this first, we made the move first because of our kids' safety, the kids that are in the departments. But absolutely, don't make this... I don't want no misunderstanding. Did I do it also and choose that spot when Chad gave it to me for economic development? Absolutely, I did. Don't... Look, please don't misquote me. I absolutely also did it as a good economic development move, because if you ask some of those people, and particularly that family I just talked about, they will tell you, they love the convenience of dropping their kids off in a safe environment that's clean, doesn't have mold and mildew in it, they can go right across the mall and go shopping for tennis shoes, they can go to Cafe de Man and have a beignet and some coffee, and do other things throughout the mall. So, is it a positive for our kids, for their safety, and also for our economic development? Absolutely. But I guess it's like anything else, the positive things that you do get criticized. And I... Look, I want to thank George Brennan. And I- look, I want to thank George Brannigan for putting in, I think, over fifty thousand dollars of things that can be moved if we have- have to move. But I'm never going to call it a temporary site, because temporary would mean I would be lying to the public. I'm telling the public right now, as long as I'm the mayor and that mall is open, and it continues to draw in the participation that it's drawing in, I'm going to keep it there. Recreation, and with y'all's blessing of renewing a lease, and I'm sure I have the support of the at-large councilpeople, and also the council of the district, and I'm sure the rest of you all, to keep something there that everybody is saying good stuff about, not the four or five people on Facebook that don't like anything that we do. I mean, I get the fake news that's created. I'm not worried about that. I'm more worried about the real people, the real people that go there, and the real people that are used from District One to District Five, and every district in between, that love it. Before I let Deborah speak, I think Chad needs to just inform the council of the current- if you have current numbers, Chad, I'm sorry I'm throwing this on you at the last minute, but he's very up to date with usually the things that are going on. I'm sure he can tell you some of the latest things that we're doing at the mall, at the- at the gymnastics spot, and where we are. Chad?
Thank you, yes. We are- we have just started, Monday actually started our spring and winter registration, so I don't have some of those new numbers up yet. We've going to be adding some tumbling classes and some other stuff, some mommy and me classes. That's going to boost the- the participants that we've had already. But as the mayor said, one hundred percent right. I mean, we're talking about four or five people that are using social media instead of a text message, a group message. So, they like to talk to themselves on social media and try to stir stuff- stir stuff up. There's nothing negative about this. Numbers thirty-nine percent up in revenue, thirty-three percent up in participation in those programs alone in that facility. Recreation as a whole is up six percent right now. Now, that's prior to the Monday numbers that are coming in, and I will tell you, as of Monday, we already have waitlists. So, and you know, to kind of go back, and I understand Councilman Carroll, about the temporary move, the city doesn't own a facility that size for us to move into. That was part of the reason for us having to move, because we outgrew that facility and it had some issues. Everything at the mall is going great. Look, not only from District One through District Five, I will tell you, from La Plasse all the way to New Orleans, we pull people in that are coming to the Kenner Recreation Department to get gymnastics, martial arts, and cheerleading, because no other Recreation Department offers what we have here in Kenner.
Y'all have any questions for Chad?
Yeah, I have- I have some comments based on all of this.
All right.
And first, let me say that safety is always, always, always a priority. For- it should be for everyone in here. I'm no different. Safety is. But- but I am going to say also that when it was first presented to me, my understanding was that it was temporary, that it was not permanent. And I took that based on some conversations, and based on the fact the contract is only two years, and based on the fact where it was coming from Barbie Gym, where we had leisure services, that there was some conversation about that building itself, which I'm not going to go into. But that is my understanding of why I said it was temporary, for sure. I don't get my- make my decisions or get my news from Facebook. I- anyone can tell you, I am not a Facebook person. I don't know other than when people have birthdays about Facebook. I don't- I don't do Facebook. So when I get information or when I make decisions, it's based on me talking to people, talking to my colleagues, talking to the administration, particularly Ms. Foshee, from that- from that standpoint. I guess we're going to always be some- because of social media, that's what the world is today. People are going to have opinions, and they are entitled to their opinions, I guess, if it's one, two, three, four, or five. But I don't base it on that. I come to my own conclusions. My bigger point is that because of my interpretation of temporary, because where we are now, because we have moved now the entire staff over there, that I think it is incumbent upon us to have a plan. It is incumbent upon us for me and for us to understand where we are now, why we have done this, and what is the end game is for this. That's what I think we should have. And I would expect to be able to receive that in a timely manner, and all of us to receive that. So there won't be no misunderstanding. And as it relates to people, I'm sure the revenues are up. I'm sure a number of people are for it. But there are some people I- I'm going to- I know for a fact, for logistical purposes also, that are not as favorable for it, because of the- the distance that they may have to travel now, which is more than what they did before. So is everybody- is it a- is it a boom from economically? Is it gives us opportunity to expand? Of course. But there's that common denominator of people that live District One, now it's further. It does affect them more now. So that is my position, which should be my only position. Not only position, but my priority position as it relates to the people that I represent. So I would like to see a plan. I would like to know if this is better for us, then we have to adjust, obviously. But I think it's- we should have some type of plan. We should all know where we're going to be at next year or the year after that.
And I appreciate that, and my plan as the mayor of the City of Kenner is to stay where we are. If this council chooses to disappoint probably the majority of the City of Kenner's residents and not renew the lease in two years, that's up to the council, but that won't be on my hands. Because I'm happy with where it is. I think it's good. I mean, look, Greg, I- I understand the people of District One might have a further place to travel, but I could listen to the same thing from Councilman Brennan. District Five has a further place to travel to District One. It's not taking it from one district to the other. It's the available square footage that was available, and it's- it's the environment that we're putting them in where they have the choice of shopping and helping economic development. Like the sales tax numbers I read earlier before we started, I'm not saying it's from that. I'm saying it's from all the things that we're all doing, the non-elected officials in the City of Kenner here, from police protection to district councilpeople, at-large councilpeople, and the mayor's office, getting things done and improving those quality-of-life things that people like, and making people happy. And look, I get it. Not everybody's going to be happy. Look, there could be people in District Five and Four, Three, and Two that aren't happy.
Hey, that's- that's the game we play.
We're not going to make everybody happy, and- and, look, we want- we want to do more programs, and I've told you this. If we ever made the big move to the Esplanade Mall, what did I promise you? I promised you that there would be a quick check or a quick service counter in the Public Works EOC building for District One residents, for every resident of the City of Kenner, but particularly for your District One residents, my District One residents, Kristy and Tom's District One residents, to actually have access and not have to go all the way to North Kenner. So I did promise you that.
Yeah, we talked about that. We talked about a number of things, but, you know, I guess what I'm trying to- my point is that, and maybe it's me, maybe I'm just sometimes maybe anal like that, but I- I work better when I see things written down and- and giving information to be able to help me with understanding it and to be able to present it to people that ask me. And I believe that is something that- that I would like to have. Can't speak for everyone else, but I would like to have that.
I understand.
Gotcha. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
I think we killed it.
Councilmember Wilmot?
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, when this comes up on the agenda, we have various things that we have to approve for expenditures, and this is leased property. I think this is the fourth acquisition, if I'm not mistaken, on something that's involved in the interior for some type of equipment, whether it be mats, flooring, mirrors, now- now this furniture. And- and I get it. I get it. But we- I think what it is is more of a status check, just to make sure that- that we're doing good, we're on the positive end of the stick. And- and I appreciate you, Chad, for knowing those numbers and coming here today and giving us that information. That helps. It really does. And I think we periodically, anytime we have some purchases that are associated with this, we need that reassurance, because we are dealing with the public funds. So this is important to us to get it right. So, that's all. Thank you.
My- my take on this is we're accommodating more children. Whether it's permanent or temporary, we are there as long as the mall basically says we can be there. I mean, if they come back with a lease that's three times the money and the numbers don't work, that makes no sense to stay there. And then, you know, I understand, Greg, what you're saying, that we have to have another plan, so, you know, let's look at another, you know, make sure we have something in line for the future. We don't have a crystal ball to be able to figure this stuff out. But basically, the permanent versus temporary, that's based up to the mall and what they come back with at the end of the lease. The fifty thousand dollars, not a penny more than fifty thousand, that I put up went into equipment that is mobile, that we can take with us wherever we end up. I think that it would be important to look at participation prior to this move. Chad? We need to look at participation prior to this move, and maybe we can get a feel for where the people are coming from. I think that would be important, too, you know, because we do- I do not want one child to be inconvenienced. And, you know, I know, when you look at numbers and you look at the Recreation Department turning money back into the city that's not used in a particular year, that tells me that this person is- is mindful of where we're spending money, okay? And that's- that's all I have to say.
Well, just real quick, just to follow up on your- so prior to us going into the mall, that is the numbers that we're comparing, right? Because this is our first four months-
Right.
-that we just completed. So the thirty-nine percent is the- the increase from us prior- prior to us being in that facility.
I understand that, but if we knew it was how many kids in District One, Two, Three, Four, and Five, you know, then we look- I don't know if you can do that.
Our- our systems won't do that, because the systems don't know addresses and where they fall in council districts.
Okay, okay. All right. Councilmember Brennan?
Thank you, Council President. Chad, the only comment, and really, I- I- kudos to you and the job you've done. I think everyone appreciates many of the directors we have, and that's certainly appreciated. I still think we're missing an economic development possibility until you get the mayor and Councilman Segura in a wrestling match over there at the Recreation Facility. I- I think you're passing dollars up that.
Well, if I can follow up just real quick on that, I'll- I'll make a quick announcement. And, you know, following up on the mall, I see Mr. Damian Kennedy, who most of y'all have all met, the general manager of the mall, probably three, four times a week. We sit, and we have meetings all the time, trying to come up with some ideas. I don't think anybody sitting up here can say that the trunk or treat this year was a failure. So, we're working with the mall coming up with more things. It's either February eighth or February ninth. Getting back to the- before I say that, the mall itself is ecstatic with the City of Kenner right now. We are bringing people in. I can tell you, if anybody wants to come in, if any of y'all haven't seen the facility, come and check it out. If you can come in the afternoon, you'll see the parents, the guardians that are sitting in there with the Bath and Body Works bags, with the Cafe de Monde, Cafe Allee. They're shopping inside the mall. They're spending their money inside the mall. The mall is very happy with us. I fully expect them to be working with us. They don't want us to go anywhere. I can assure you, they don't want us to leave. I fully expect them to be working with us when the rent comes back around again for the renewal of the lease. But what I was getting to, the main announcement, they're so happy with us, and they're jumping on board with the stuff that we're doing. They're actually doing a free wrestling event, center court, February. It's either eighth or ninth. We'll be putting it out pretty soon. The wrestling, Wildcat Wrestling that's been happening at Butch Dewey is going to be center court in the mall. So, Councilman Brennan, if you want to grab a challenger as well, I'm sure we can have a double match.
You know, I'm thinking, Councilwoman McKenney, I think I could do it.
I don't think so. I don't think so.
As long as I have Councilman Wilmot as my partner. Thank you. Good job, Chad. Thanks.
Mayor, did you have something else?
Yeah, just to add to what he was talking about, the trunk or treat, I want to credit your wife, Lisa, came to me at the trunk or treat and said, "This is absolutely fantastic." And she had a very good idea, which led to the idea that we're working on right now. If we could do something for Easter the same way as we did trunk or treat, if we can do that, or possibly moving a Christmas display to there. So there's some things that end up work, and that was your- Ms. Brennan's idea, I'll give her credit for that, that we would work with that over this next year to look at that, because one of the problems we've had in District Five, don't seem to have it in District One, that's why we moved more things down there this past year, but was when it rains, obviously it gets sloppy at City Park. So if we were indoor for some type of display, if, I'm not saying we're going to do it, but I think that the idea of doing that, and I want to give credit to her, is something that we could do, because I think she, like many other people, were very, very overwhelmed with the amount of people that were there. So it's all the good things that we're doing, and I appreciate y'all's support, and that's why this is coming up right now, because of the time that we need this, you know, ratified. Thank you.
Well, I'm glad the First Lady of District Five is engaged. Okay. Sorry. Councilmember McKenney?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to jump on the bandwagon. I think that the perfect end to the new Christmas Easter parade that we should also start would be an Easter egg hunt in the Esplanade Mall, so I think that would be great.
And look, I'm-
And the church that's by the Esplanade Mall can help it with that.
Absolutely, and those are the ideas that we're open to from the council, to give us those ideas from the general public, to make these things work in the mall. So, very good idea. She's trying to up-
I want to be the Easter bunny.
I'll save those comments.
Councilmembers, please vote. Motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen F is summary ordinance number twelve thousand six hundred and forty-nine, an ordinance accepting the proposal from Ken Worth of Louisiana LLC, an authorized dealer for parts and labor to repair Unit twenty-one thirty-six in the amount of six thousand six hundred and ninety dollars and fifty-three cents for the Department of Public Works.
Motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero. Item fifteen G is summary ordinance number twelve thousand six hundred and fifty, an ordinance approving Amendment Number One to the agreement between the City of Kenner and Elos Environmental LLC for geographic information system services to increase the agreement amount by one hundred and ten thousand dollars for a total not to exceed amount of two hundred thousand dollars.
Motion by Councilmember Segura, seconded by Councilmember Hayes. We have some people that would like to speak. Ms. Foshee?
Yes, thank you. Before you proceed, first off, thank you for your support for this- this item. We have some of the folks from Elos in the audience. I would like to call Jesse McQuig to come forward. Jesse is the primary person on our GIS account for Elos. I've received a lot of questions, and I'm not as good at explaining what GIS is or how important these people are to the total operation of the City of Kenner as Jesse is. So we've asked Jesse just to come up and give an outline of what he does for us, what the projects are he's done thus far, and then what we have on board for the future. In fact, I think he can help us figure out where those recreation kids are located and put that on a map for us, right? Okay. So I'm going to turn it over to Jesse McQuig with Elos.
Thank you all for having me. So, I'll just begin. GIS, Geographic Information System, is the ability to map where things are, along with the application of analysis. I'm sorry. Can y'all hear me now? Adding on the application of analysis with the GeoReference Process. Point in case, the Recreation Department, if we wanted to find out where these kids live, I could absolutely do that. So, just some of the things these last few months or year, or almost. The CRS review. Ms. Heather come up here with FEMA flood maps and showed y'all a couple of layers that we had for that. I'm not really sure on the results that she got from- back from that, or if she's gotten them back. But I personally, I'm- I'm expecting a whole lot better than- than what we- what we currently had. So, other things that we have updated, we went through all of the, well, the basic software's accounts, okay? Being able to get it, the same information throughout all the departments. I know Ms.- Ms. Tometia with Community Development, she- she came up, she had, I think it was a million-dollar grant. She was, I think she was awarded, I'm not really sure. But in- in that case, there was a requirement for that, for them to get that grant of knowing the build date for every single home in the City of Kenner. Also some census data where- where children live that are under six. So, with the data sharing, okay, we was able to reach out to Jefferson Parish and get that build date list from them, and then join it with the address shapefile that we had, okay? So, by being able to do that, the alternative is to get an architectural historian to go in and say when each of these were, you know, and that was, I think, maybe, I don't know, about thirty thousand dollars, I guess, that we were able to save that way. So, there was a... I'm not really sure which other grant. I think it was with Ms. Heather and OEM. and OEM, that we were taking a look at some of the flooding areas, based off of the base flood elevation from FEMA in the special flood hazard area. But, there was a spreadsheet for, that required GIS, you know, in order to be able to get those answers. And I know that, I think that was about a $9 million grant that was up for grabs, that she's trying to go after. Hopefully that works out. So, you know, along with that, code, city cuts, there's a process, currently everything's all on paper, you write, you know, filling out reports and carrying around stacks of paper in their truck, you know? And so, we've created online surveys, shared through the accounts, so that when they're out there, you know, on their device, they could take the pictures, answer the questions for whatever inspections, or the city, you know, how tall the grass is, or whatever, and then they'll be able to submit that, and it goes back here in real time for further, you know, analysis, or, you know, be able to push over the recreation, actually get it cut. So that, that cuts out, I'd say, 90% of the paperwork, and at least 50% of the time, maybe more. So, we're working on trying to get that, you know, implemented, getting everybody trained on it, you know? It's just a whole lot better processes. Okay, so, currently, we're working on updating the sewage and drainage layers. They're, they're pretty rough, to be honest with you. So, you know, that's a good, good focus that we're on right now, to try and get that, I mean, I have some GPS devices to get down to, you know, submeter, so my plan is, once we get, I'd say we're about a third of the way done with it, so once I get a good amount, I'm going to go back and be able to go out with the director, whoever, and, you know, hey, if I'm looking down, there's a manhole, and it's going to be right here. My, you know, my goal for that is, hopefully, make sure that, a lot better decision can be made in the permitting process, and be more reliable, as far as that. Future endeavors, you know, along with everything that we, we're trying to continue, the drainage, the sewage, the city cuts, we worked a little bit with the relocation analysis. I'm also reaching out to the Port Authority to try and get some, maybe some more involvement in there. Prior to this, the, there hasn't been any discussions on any of that, because the GIS data wasn't up to par. So that's what I'm going to be reaching out with them, and seeing what actual requirements they need, and maybe there might be future development there. So, other than that, I guess, really, I just want to say that, you know, thank y'all for letting me, you know, participate, you know, kind of head this up, and I just want y'all to know that, you know, it's my personal goal to really, you know, give y'all something worthwhile, and I think GIS is really applicable throughout everything, and with the amount of data sharing and the amount of accessibility nowadays, you know, even the space station down here, we was able, for the anniversary, we were able to post an online story map to kind of give the history and show some other things, some of their events that were out there. So it really can go from technical utility to being able to share just, you know, the next Easter bunny thing, you know, out on Facebook, because, you know, and it can tell you where the parade routes are, everything. I mean, I actually mapped some of Hammond-Shanrock parades for them, share it on Facebook and all, so. But, if there's any questions that any of y'all have, anytime, y'all can give me a call, I'd be happy to go over anything, really.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Council, do you have any questions of him, or any of the others from ELOS here, before you move on? Thank you.
We have the vote on.
Yes, sir.
Okay. On 15G, we have a motion by Councilmember Segura, second by Councilmember Hayes. Councilmembers, please vote.
Motion passes 7-0. Item 16 is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item 16A is an ordinance amending ordinance number 11,062, adopted by the City of Kenner, Louisiana, on March 17, 2016, entitled Unified Development Code of the City of Kenner, Louisiana, more particularly amending and rezoning lots Y-2-Y-1-Z-70, 69, 68, 67, 66, and B-1 Square 99, Veteran Heights subdivision, from C-1 Neighborhood Commercial, and R-2 Two-Family Residential, to C-2 General Commercial, and directing and authorizing and empowering the Planning Director for the City of Kenner to alter and amend the official zoning map of the City of Kenner, Louisiana, case Z-5-19. Item 16B is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid proposal from Presidential AC and Heating to furnish and install a 3-ton wall-mounted evaporator-coil cassette air-condition unit, condenser, and associated hardware, in an amount not to exceed $6,900 for the Kenner Police Department. Item 16C is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Urtac USA Incorporated to provide pavement lifting on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid number 19-6520, in an amount not to exceed $30,000 annually for the Department of Public Works. Item 16D is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from National Polyfab Company to supply mesh, roll wire, rebar, metal keyway, and chairs on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid number 19-6519, in an amount not to exceed $30,000 annually for the Department of Public Works. Item 16E is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid from Jack B. Harper Electrical LLC to provide vehicle detector, inductor loops on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid number 19-6516, in an amount not to exceed $70,000 annually for the Department of Public Works. Item 16F is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Fleming Construction Company LLC, in an amount not to, in the amount of $264,548.25 for the relocation of sewer line and lot L1-Airline Drive, Public Works Project Number 2018-14-S-SW, in accordance with sealed bid number 19-6513 for the Department of Public Works. Item 16G is an ordinance approving amendment number 2 to the agreement with Digital Engineering and Imaging Incorporated regarding lift station sub-basin collection area assessments to increase the not-to-exceed contract amount by $79,000 for the Department of Public Works. Item 16H is an ordinance ratifying an emergency purchase of the Waste Information Management Solutions, WIMS, software from HACH, H-A-C-H, for the wastewater plant transit in an amount of $10,996. Item 16I is an ordinance approving the use of State Contract Number 400014555, in a financing agreement with Motorola Solutions Incorporated for the purchase of portable radios for a cost not to exceed $215,298. Item 16J is an ordinance approving amendment number 1 to the contract between the City of Kenner and Rameli Janitorial Services Incorporated for garbage collection and recycling services. Item 17 is reports from the Council and/or special committees. I cannot read.
Yeah. I have one. Yes, I've been getting complaints about the new lights on Chateau Boulevard, and just wanted to report to the District 4 residents that, or the District 5 residents that use Chateau Boulevard to get to Joe Yanni. Right now, the lights, the new LED lights that were installed, to obviously save money, are blinking between Vintage and Joe Yanni, and I've gotten several calls wanting to know what's going on. It's an energy problem, and it's blinking because there's a voltage problem feeding those lights and energies on it. On West, between West Espinade and Chateau, the four poles that have been out, were not, it's an energy problem also, those poles were knocked out when a company was boring, and obviously hit the electrical lines, and also hit a water line that had to be fixed. So, energy's working on those. And again, I would please recommend to everyone that would like to see Trader Joe's in the City of Kenner, go to their website and request Trader Joe's by submitting an application via their website, to X them and tell them that we want you in our community. Trader Joe's has told me that that is a way that they look at putting stores in new locations. Another thing that I will be doing for the next six months as President of the Council, I will be asking someone from the audience to say the Pledge of Allegiance. If we don't get someone from the audience, obviously, someone up here will do it, but I really believe that, I'd like to have audience participation in that, in that thing. And basically, I can hear Al Morella's voice saying it on Veterans Day, and it rings out. So, that's why, that's one of the things that I'm going to be doing. And I'm finished.
Item 18 is new business, we have none. Item 19 is unfinished business and a motions to reconsider or removed from a table position, we have none. Item 20 is persons wishing to address the Council on special subject matters.
The first person that's on the list is Barbara Soniat.
So, I'm going to put this out, and as a reminder.
Ms. Soniat, please state your name, your address, and you'll have three minutes.
Barbara Soniat, 315 Pollock Place, Kenner. I addressed the Council on December 5, 2019, to draw attention to several concerns and issues affecting South Kenner residents. Over the course of past several years, these issues have been presented to some of you when you were candidates for office. They've also been presented to various city officials, departments, and to this Council. To date, we have had no response to the issues that have been addressed. To summarize, our concerns are related to property development in South Kenner, there's a major development going on on Jefferson Highway between Decatur and Farrell Street. We've not been able to get any information as to what is being developed there. Numerous trees have been cut down, this affects the character of our community, we don't know how it's going to affect our safety, we don't know what's going in there, and we're very concerned. We want to know what's happening there. Major developments, trees being cut create drainage problems. The second major thing we're concerned about is the drainage problem in South Kenner. The levee board, major development there. We don't know if retainer ditches were put there to ease the increase in drainage problems from the levee development, and now we have another major development there. Nobody's looking at how that's going to affect the drainage. Currently, there are serious drainage problems in South Kenner, which are going to be exacerbated by these changes. We've asked for a log on the maintenance of the ditches, the drainage system, we have to date not gotten that. We are, in addition, we're concerned about the, we're very concerned about the dwindling of educational, recreation services in South Kenner. I applaud what's happening at West Espinade Mall, the increase in revenues. There are real people living in South Kenner, perhaps some of those revenues could be redirected to make sure that our kids, our citizens, also have access to opportunities for after-school educational programs, summer educational programs, adult educational programs, employment programs. These are critical issues, and it's essential that the citizens of South Kenner be included, be made aware, and also given an opportunity to have input on the changes that affect our citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have copies of my report for the mayor, the city attorney, and each member of the city council. Please give us feedback. We've asked for feedback within the first quarter of this year on the issues that we have raised. To date, we haven't received any. Thank you.
Thank you. Gilbert Francis? Oh, Gregory?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Ms. Soniat, for coming up. I appreciate it, all the time, to be able to come up and discuss things. Yes, you did, last year, in December, around the second week in December, some information was shared with us and the administration to be able to answer some of the questions. I thought we did answer a little bit about the purchase of the, I'm going to call it the Morgan Playground, because that's where I grew up at and called it, the trees being cut down. One of the other things you mentioned was the drainage. That was another subject that Ms. Foshee and I have been working on, and it's a matter of putting it all together. I guess I could have, I could have told you piecemeal, to give you one at a time, but in the process of trying to put it together to give you a full report on it, December 9th or 10th is December, so you have to factor in the holidays and all of that to be able to get the information. I will tell you that the property on Morgan Playground was purchased, the trees were cut down. I have heard everything from homes, to retail, to warehouses, but the individual or individuals that own the property have not submitted anything, have not communicated anything specific to the planning or code, to the administration, or to myself. I have been in contact with him, either if he knows, he's not sharing it with me, but he have not officially submitted any paperwork to myself, the City of Kenner, to planning or code. And we're going to have to wait until he's, until he's offer up more information. As far as the drainage, Ms. Foshee is a little bit more astute on part of the conversation that we had, and we still trying to put that together as it relates to drainage for South Kenner, but she can talk to that a little bit, and then I'll try to remember some of the other things you said. Ms. Foshee?
Councilman Carroll, the mayor, has asked to have a meeting with Ms. Soniat to go over all of these issues.
That's fine, but briefly, to be able to get some information about what you and I spoke about, the drainage. Now, the other issues we're going to get to, but I want to be able to tell Ms. Soniat something today, which I did about the land, and I'll address some other things.
This is, I find this very exciting, we're talking about pump to the river again. Many years ago, in the City of Kenner, plans were put together, funds were expended upon, engineering studies, analyses were done, all the basins were evaluated, and determination was made how to best create a pump to the river situation, which would help drain South Kenner. I'm not sure everybody knows, but all of South Kenner, which is really the highest point in the city, drains to the lake, which is really the lowest point in the city, instead of going straight into the river. At some point, a decision was made that instead of putting that pump to the river system here, it was put in Harahan, and that's really great, because that also helps part of Kenner, but now we are looking again, with the help of the engineers who did the original study, with coming up with a proposal, or several proposals for pumping, pump to the river, and we're looking at also some funding opportunities. If that were to come through, it would dramatically change and improve the drainage situation. If that were to come through, it would dramatically change and improve the drainage situation for everyone south of the railroad tracks.
And there is a study.
Notice to proceed was given on the study yesterday for the engineering group that did the first study to update their study and bring these, bring their recommendations to, to, forward to the administration, to the council, so that we can figure out where to go next.
Yes, and another drainage project, which is along Williams in South Kenner, that was predicated from our former Community Development Director, Ms. Arida Terrell, now Ms., Ms. Shaw is there, and we're in the process of some, putting that in place also, the drainage. If anyone ever rode down Williams, you know between the airline and I guess Jefferson Highway, it's an issue. So, right around the tracks, we are in the process of trying to put a drainage project in there also.
Councilman, that one is with FEMA at this time, undergoing review, so we expect to hear back in a minute.
Yes, so, these are some of the things that the mayor, when he meets Ms., Ms. Soniat, be able to have written, but we're, we're going to talk about it now. Also, as it relates to some of the educational support that you mentioned for the children and recreation, Ms. Shaw is, is new in her position. We have had conversations about what is it, what are some of the things that we as, because we are limited like everybody else to be able to do with different structures. A number of times, people have talked about the AP Clay Center. The city of Kenner owns the building, but we don't own the, we don't own the, the pre-K that goes on there. It has been determined that the Jefferson Parish will be moving it. When that's going to happen, who knows? But based on what I believe, that they're going to be there for at least a couple of years. Also, some people have said that we are the parish, we're going to tear the building down. I don't know where that came from, but whoever told you that, that is not true. It, it was never stated, never, from this administration, from me, or from the parish to ever do that. But people say things sometimes that, you know, I, I get it, but I, I just want to tell you, that is not the case. We cannot control the parish school system, what they determine to do, and the move is to move it to the once health center. But like I said, it's two years away. They have not done anything there. It is a blank building with the gates locked. So, are they going to be moving this year? Definitely not. Are they going to be moving next year the children? Definitely not. Also, some of the things as it relates to not educational, and that was a piece there that me and Ms. Shaw will be talking about also, what can we do from a recreational standpoint? You are correct. There are some recreational issues that me and Ms. Foshee have been meeting pretty much on a, on a, on a monthly basis to address everything from the Buddy Lawson, Lincoln Manor, Susan Park, Rosemary Minor, Betsy Hammond, Bertha Lee, all of those little small pocket parks, along with the major park. We have talked about labor concerns, adding people who are not in these specific locations. Now, we have, we are addressing salaries, because there are some people in the city of Kenner, particularly at Recreation, that make under $10 an hour. Those are some things that had you been here for the past, or had you listened to the last budget hearing, that we are working on trying to get into place, and why that is important. That is important to a man and a woman who are raising a family, that we are in the process of getting going also. We are talking about new constructions, specifically at Buddy Lawson, getting the new concession stand into place. The repairs at Rosemary Minor, the signage there, the repairs at Bertha Lee Jackson, Lincoln Manor. So, it's, it's a number of things, because I am responsible for all three of those locations, all of the educational support that we are going to need, the parish, and some of the people like yourself. You're, you're a educator, and you are a part of groups of retired teachers that can support also. The building at AP Clay, it needs some work to it. There's no doubt about that, but the building will not be torn down. It will be used for, hopefully, for years to come, when I'm long gone away from here. Obviously, funding takes place. We're going to need some funding to address all of these things. Me and the Recreation Director have talked on behalf of certain things, but I'm going to be personally involved to helping, to help with the funding, along with the general funding. Also, so, to be able to put the funding in place to address Lincoln Manor, Buddy Lawson, Susan Park, and all of those things that I, that I said. So, I know we met in December, and it may seem like a long time on, on, on a calendar, but there are some things that we are in the process of doing. When you meet with the mayor, he will be able to give you more information than what I've given you tonight, but at least I've touched on it to hopefully let you know that we have not been doing anything but putting it together in a, in a plan that I'm going to be comfortable with to be able to share with the administration, the mayor, and the Recreation Department, to start putting these projects into place, to get them done. I, I apologize for not giving you that information. I gave you not, but I, I also spoke with Ms. Clay. I think at the last meeting, I had not gotten back with her, but I will give her a call next week, so we can start meeting on a weekly basis, just to, just to update her, so she may be able to update you and other people. I know I told her that before, I didn't do it, but Ms. Clay, I promise you, I will do that next week, give you a call, so we can schedule, go over this and some other things, based on the information that you, that you gave me. So, saying all that, the mayor will be here, Ms. Soniat, to be able to schedule a meeting with him, to schedule a meeting so you guys can talk. Me and Ms. Foshee will continue to talk and to talk about things. We will have more information about the drainage, about the recreation, and Ms. Shaw also will be part of that. So, I look forward to getting this information, not only getting the information, but putting it in place. And one of my, one of my last comment is, all of these infrastructure projects and all those things are great. One of the things that I, that I personally have a, a passion for, from, coming from Morgan to Buddy Lawson, is that the participation of the playgrounds, Buddy Lawson, Lincoln Manor, and Susan Park, that have taken a dive. That, to me, is something serious, because that is where my passion was, coming up as a young man playing, as a young man coaching, my children and some of the children, many of the children, particularly Ms. Soniat, your brother, who, to me, is one of, one of my first mentors, him and Mr. Buddy Lawson. So, to see what shape it is, it is in now, it is disheartening to me, and we have to do something about that. I have reached out to some of the younger coaches from the Buddy Lawson, Lincoln Manor, and Susan. We will be getting together to talk about, what are some of the things we need to do? So, all of those things, I know I said a lot, but those are the things that we have trying to put in place to address your concerns. So, hopefully, the next time we speak, we'll have more information, and you will have some comfort of we moving forward with that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, Gilbert Francis? What's that? Jackie Clay?
Just to reiterate, I am the granddaughter of the Reverend, the late Reverend Dr. Arthur Paul Clay Sr. of Kenner, Louisiana. He was an activist for the community whom we love dearly. I stand before you to reiterate several concerns with the parks in our neighborhood. Here are some pictures. The concerns are as follows. At the AP Clay Park, there is a drain standing water, there is drain standing water by the basketball court. The benches need to be replaced, and a host of other renovations need to be addressed. The Betsy Hammond Park needs a Betsy Hammond Park sign installed, along with other renovations. The Bertha Lee Jackson Park has broken swings, and a new drug-free zone sign needs to be installed. Lastly, the Rose Minor Park needs a handicap accessible water fountain, a Rose Minor Park sign installed, and a host of other renovations. These are a few concerns note, noted with our parks in South Kenner. There have been several letters sent out concerning these issues regarding the parks, ranging from February 2019 to August 2019. Lastly, as a community, we are aware that the head start is moving from the AP Clay Center. So, in turn, as a community, we would like to see a resource center implemented for the community, where there can be computer classes for the elderly and tutoring programs for the youth in that community. We would like the building to stand with proper renovations. We want to keep our kids encouraged in South Kenner, especially because there aren't enough activities for the kids in South Kenner. I hope that these concerns are taken in consideration and will be addressed for a safer park in South Kenner. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Ms. Clay, thank you for coming also. As I said before, this is the Ms. Clay that I did not call, but I will be calling next week, as this information is facilitated on. And there's no need to go over it again. We all have the same position and passion on it, and we look forward to the renovations, the improvements, and, and bigger than that, the, the support from individuals like yourself to support the playgrounds, the people, the children themselves. The infrastructure stuff is great, but nothing, nothing is more important than the people themselves, and that's where, that's where we have to address the priority, for sure. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Richard Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. Richard Brown, Sessions Lane, Kenner. First, Mr. President, I want to congratulate you on being elected council president and for doing a very good job tonight.
Thank you.
And I also want you to know that I have taken your, followed your lead, taken your advice. I have written to Trader Joe's urging them to come to Kenner, and particularly to the Pavilion Mall.
Thank you.
Wanted to address two things. First is the council rule change regarding when the agenda is completed, and if the object is to be less transparent, city of Kenner, you have succeeded, because you are now giving less notice than any other city that I'm aware of in South Louisiana, as far as the agenda items for your council meetings. But I do want to congratulate you at least on, on changing the one-day provision to two days. To only give one day's notice was just outrageous. So, thank you for at least compromising and requiring two days. I think it would make more sense if that was the same day of, of, of every week. In other words, you went to 48 hours before the council meeting. That means people always having to calculate, well, is this, this week's council meeting going to be on a Thursday or a Friday? I wish you had just simply made it Tuesday, 10:00 a.m. every Tuesday, but it is what it is. At least you changed it from 24 hours. I want to comment on something that's coming up at the next council meeting. I think it was item 16J on tonight's agenda. It was actually on the supplemental agenda, and that's the amendment to the Remelli contract that we knew from the last meeting was going to be coming up. And I just have one problem with it, and that's that the, the ordinance itself, amending it, provides that future amendments can be adopted by resolution instead of by ordinance. Please, for God's sakes, don't do that. Contracts in the city of Kenner need to be approved by ordinance, not by resolution, by stating that future amendments to this contract, which is the, now that, that Viola is gone, it's the biggest contract in the city of Kenner. To permit future amendments by resolution rather than ordinance, I think is outrageous for two, two or three, two reasons. First off, an ordinance does, I mean, a resolution does not have to lay over from one meeting. A resolution can be voted on at the same meeting at which it is introduced. That's not right for something like this. Secondly, it could even be introduced from the floor and voted on that night with absolutely no prior notice to the biggest contract the city has. Please require any future amendments to be approved by ordinance, just like it always has, just like every other contract has to be.
Mr. Brown, your three minutes is up.
And I've concluded. Thank you, Mr. President.
Let's see. Al Morella?
Al Morella, 4260 East Loyola Drive, 5th District, 48 years. First, I want to thank all of the speakers who took the time to come down here tonight. That's what I like to see, the more, the better. I like to see that signing sheet over there full, maybe with a second page to it. Anyway, I want to talk about a project in the 5th District that started when Kentonopolis was occupying that seat up there. The project was curbing on East Loyola Drive and West Loyola Drive. I took issue with Councilman Denopoulos, and I took issue with, with Dominic Gimpastado when he was in that seat. The project is still incomplete after all of these years. Now, on East Loyola, since there's no curbing, that's the only block, the 4200 block on East Loyola, they stopped in my block, and it's still without curbing. The turn on East Loyola at the end, people are not being, for some reason, cannot negotiate that turn. They have created two massive potholes, done rudder up all of neutral ground, and fills up with water on each side of East Loyola at the end. Second, I used to see inspections periodically going on with that nat, with that natural gas line that runs parallel to that bridge by my house. We haven't seen, I haven't seen any inspections now in quite some time. So, unless there was something done that I didn't see them doing it, but I haven't seen any done. That's something that needs to be done on a routine basis, inspection of that natural gas line. One other thing, next item, since we talking about buildings down there in South Kenner, I want to talk about the old Kenner Junior High Building. Few years back, burned out, still sitting there, burned out. I'd like to get an update on that, as to what's going on with that building. It, it, it's really shameful to see that burnt-out building still sitting there after all of these years. So, I'd like to get an update on that as well. Anybody got any comments, any questions? And one more thing, I want to address this to Councilman Brennan. Councilman Brennan, the older I get, the louder that voice gets. I don't know why, but those vocal cords get stronger the older I get.
That's because your hearing's going bad, so you...
Well, I, I can hear fine. I can hear just fine.
Okay. I'm kidding, Al.
Anybody got any comments, any questions? Councilman Brennan, you, you got something you want to say?
We can have that looked into. I know the, the curbing has been an issue, but I, I know it also is a, a cost and an expense, and I got about $130,000 this year for all the projects, and if, if fill needed and things like that, I, I'll be happy to have it looked into. We have these things over at City Hall called phones, and you can just call our assistants and give us that. You don't have to come in here and...
I don't do that, Councilman. I don't discuss my business on no phone, because things can be said, and then they can be denied, they was, they can be denied they was ever said. So, I conduct my business down here, where all of the people of Kenner can hear what's going on, and no one can say, well, I didn't say this, he misconstrued something. No, I don't operate like that.
I, I understand, Mr. Morella, what I'm saying.
And that's the way I always operate, as long as I'm on this stage and as long as I attend these meetings. Now, one, one question I would like to ask you...
Is it okay if I talk? Thank you.
Well, well, I'm time limited, you're not.
All I'm telling you is, I see you all the time.
Yes.
You don't ever mention anything, and then you come here like nobody's doing anything.
Mm-hmm.
All I'm saying is, you could call me, you could call my office, we could have a discussion about it, and we'll get it looked at. That's a lot quicker than every two weeks.
I don't do that.
Okay.
I do it just like I'm doing it. But however, if I could get a few extra seconds, Council, Councilman Brennan?
You got 10 seconds.
Okay. Is this something that could be done by our Public Works Department, that we don't have to bring a contractor in to put this curbing? Can the Public Works Department do this? Mr. Schreiner, you got something you want to say?
Mayor Zahn?
I will get with the district councilman, Brian. You and I will get together with Mr. Schreiner. We will see what we can do, maybe sometimes we can put some things together between Public Works, I'm speaking out of turn, just to check with you, some funding from Public Works, some of your funding, and see what we can do to address that. It, it's something that, just for the public to know, it's something that Councilman Brennan has spoken about to me and our Public Works Director before in the past, that it is important to him, because it has been going like that for a while. But you're mentioning things only around your neighborhood and around your house. Councilman Brennan, like each of these council people, district council people, have things throughout all of the city, and you're right, Councilman Brennan, you only have $130,000. That's why we try to help. I'm doing the same thing. I'm doing the same thing with Councilman Hayes right now with a cut through on Joe Yenney. Limited funds in the districts, there's some things that we can do in the departments. There are lots of things in District 5 that Councilman Brennan has brought to my attention that I'm trying to help him with, but we have no problem looking at it with Mr. Schreiner to see what we can do. We'll get on it next week. And since you won't, I guess, talk to us in Walmart or Rouse's about it, we'll wait two weeks before we give you an answer unless you want to call one of us.
No, I'll wait two weeks.
That's what holds up the process, though, when you do that.
That's no problem, ma'am.
All right, that was 10 seconds.
We're all on the record. Thank you, Councilman.
Greg Teft.
I'll pass.
Thank you, Greg.
Good evening. Pastor Jacqueline Brown Cockerham, 2610 Decatur Street Apartment 8, Kenner, Louisiana. First, I'd just like to say that Happy New Year. I am in total agreement with Ms. Soniak regarding South Kenner and District 1 with the dwindling educational activities, the revenue that's being drained from our neighborhoods, and the quality of life that's being seriously affected in District 1. Another concern is that Annie Washington Center, which is no longer operational for our children or our community, Veteran Heights subdivision. But however, it is being occupied for Kenner Police Department operations. I would like to know why that center is no longer available for our children. And another concern, according to item 16A in Veteran Heights, there is, there are several plots of lane facing Veterans Boulevard that are to be rezoned. And in the rezoning process, I would like to know what is to be constructed there. I would like to know if Kenner owns the property. And I would like to know if this information or activity, I don't know your terminology in the logo when you're doing the planing and all, but has the planning department acted on this information? And if they have, I would like to see people who live in the district making decisions about the district and not living outside of the parish or outside of the district at some point. If Kenner owns the property, I would like to know why it cannot be used for our fire station. Again, we are still buck-naked without a fire station in this south side part of Veteran Highway, Veterans Boulevard.
You go now.
Any questions? I mean, I want some comments, some suggestions, and some answers.
The three minutes is up.
Yeah, the ordinance is on for first reading, so we really can't entertain discussion about things that are on for first reading, but I'm sure the administration or someone will be glad to get with her and answer these questions later on. They'll call her.
Thank you.
Who would that be?
That would probably be the representative from the planning department. I'm sure Ms. Foshee will get with them and see if maybe somebody can contact you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilman. I appreciate it.
Hit your button again. Go.
It's on.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pastor, again, thank you for coming today. As far as it relates to the Annie Washington building, that building has, we have seen three different administrations, from Muniz, who had an opinion on what he wanted to do with it, to Yenney, to what he wanted to do with it, to where we are now. So it just seemed as if each time a mayor came in, there was a different perspective of what to do with it, even with one right now. So if you were here at the last meeting, it was suggested about a safe house, but I'm not even sure if that can be done right now with all the exposure that we're talking about. Again, that is something that Ms. Shaw, the Community Development Director, and I have talked about to see what is the best use for that building because people have mentioned educational means. It could be that. Obviously, there are going to be some renovations that need to be done for that building for that because it's been so many years since it's been used in that capacity. As far as the police department, I'm not privy to any activities of what they're doing there. So that's my take on the Annie Washington, and I will be speaking to Ms. Shaw, and I can update you more on that situation. As you know, you guys had a meeting for the first time. I want to congratulate you for the Veteran Heights Civic Association.
Thank you.
Thank you yourself and the ladies and men and young men that happened to come there tonight. It's in infancy stages, but we're in the process of talking about that. One being the fire situation, another being obviously the airport drainage, infrastructure, all of those things, code, planning, all of those things that the civic organization is responsible to address. So since we have started that, I hope, along with Ms. Anna, to be able to see you more regularly as we address things going forward. All of the things that you said, I don't remember everything else, but I did remember Annie Washington first. So going from that and to say that we look forward for the organization to be able to address it more specifically, and I look forward to working with you with that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, we have your time is up.
No one else wishes to address anything? Okay. All right. Thank you so much, Councilman Carroll, for being attentive and respectful during the time I had to address this. Everybody, head up for blessed night.
Thank you. Please state your name and your address, and you have three minutes.
I'm Lori Barbe, 2031 Main Avenue, Kenner, District 2. I'm here to talk about debris removal in Kenner with the claw truck that's no longer available, and also the use of the Kenner dump, which is not available to Kenner residents free of charge. We have to go to Avondale. I did speak to Councilman Segura, which was a great help, and I understand something is in the works, but I don't think that's going to be anytime soon. So I guess my question is, is the debris truck, the claw, ever going to come back available to Kenner residents? And it was available after Hurricane Katrina and since, quite a few times since then. But also, why do we have, why do Kenner residents have to pay to go to the dump on David Drive? I don't know the answer to that.
Want me to go now?
Are you finished with your comments?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. So the citizens of Kenner do not pay into the millage in the parish that pays for the landfill or for the dump, so we're not able, since we don't pay the tax, to go and dump anything at David Drive without paying. The city doesn't actually have a dump, so we either have to pay, Romelli picks up like the garbage at your curb side, Romelli will pick it up, and then they take it to, I think it's Wagamah, and they take it to River Birch, but there's two over there, River Birch and Jefferson Parish. But Kenner doesn't actually have one themselves. We don't have a landfill.
Right. Is the, they used to have a claw truck that would come and...
I'm going to have to follow up on that because I don't know if that was a city claw truck or if that was a Romelli.
I think it was a Romelli one. It doesn't come any longer.
So it may be that under the prior contract or the prior contractor would do that. We'll take a look at that. I'm going to ask the legal department to take a look at the contract and see if they're supposed to be providing a claw truck. So if you wouldn't mind leaving me your number before you leave, I will call you back.
Great. Thank you.
Clara Perkins? No? Okay, that, we have... He's not on. Earl Smith. Did I miss him?
Thank you. Earl Smith, 613 Hanson Avenue in Kenner. I was here once before, too. I want to speak about a couple of requests. There's a lot of information that we need. And the old Kenner Civic Association, which I'm a member and officer, president, we want to submit a couple of public information requests. Sometime hindsight, they say it's 2020, and we've been talking about what's been happening and what's not been happening. We just wanted to take a look at some of this information. And I'll submit these requests to, well, the mayor and the attorney, and maybe we can get these to the bottom of this. There's two of them. Well, first of all, the information say that we can submit the request to the city attorney. The first one is concerning, and we want an itemized breakdown of fund disbursement from 2016-2017 Capitol Budget Project, description Rivertown Drainage Improvement Construction matching for FEMA grant. And they have the account number and information pursuant thereof. I have three of them here, one for the mayor and one for the councilman and the city attorney. So if you, you just distribute those. And then I have one other request. This request, let me see if I'm getting them right here. This is an itemized request for distribution of funds scheduled of expenditure for federal wars for year ending June 30 of 2016 and '17. Department of Transportation passed through Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development statewide flood control program Phase 2, and the amount, of course, is $708,870. We want the information on those items. I know we have to pay so much for a copy, so I guess someone will talk to us about a limitation of what we have to pay for. We don't have a big budget. But we do want to review these items through the public information requests so that we can actually understand how the distribution of funds, especially the funds supposedly allocated in District 1. We just want to know, because we don't get information about what is happening and how it's taking place. We make requests from our councilman, and I'm going to address the council at large, too, because the council at large and our councilman is responsible for informing the people in the district who vote. We don't get any information. We get will-dos and can-dos and sometime later. So public information will at least give us some information that we can disseminate to our members and talk truth to fact. I mean, we can't just assume because we don't know. We ask the question, and we have a councilman. When we ask our councilman a question, many times, he's going to call us back. He's going to get back to us. This has been said two or three times a night. It's so desultory and insulting for us not to be able to get clear information. And as I said before, I'm going to make it short and sweet. It says here that the city attorney's office oversees all requests to view public records.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Your three minutes is up.
Okay. Listen, I want to thank you for listening to my rant and rave, but I'm finished. I appreciate the opportunity.
Okay.
And we do want to be able to review this information so we can actually have the facts about what has actually happened. Thank you very much.
Councilman Wilmot. Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate you coming, Mr. Smith, today, and several folks who are here today with issues regarding District 1. I know some photographs were passed around, and we were able to view those photographs. Thank you for sending those photographs, too. I wanted to see if we can possibly add me to their, that meeting that was going to take place with District 1. Mr. Carroll and the mayor would be so gracious, I'd like to attend.
With the mayor, the mayor's going to have a separate meeting. My meeting will be, you're welcome to come, obviously, with a couple of other people, but I don't know if I'll be with the meeting with the mayor and Ms. Soniak if you're talking about that.
That's the one I'm referring to.
Yes, yes. I don't know when that's going to be here because that's on the mayor's schedule. He's going to schedule that with Ms. Soniak. I will let you know about the one that I have with Ms. Clay.
Okay, I appreciate that.
All right.
But I'm referring to the one with Ms. Soniak that I would like to attend with the mayor's office. If you can, if you just keep me in a loop, I'd appreciate it.
The photographs that we have.
Thank you.
The photographs, we do, if you want to keep those photographs, you can keep them, but otherwise, I took them one night. So anyway, those photographs are...
Thank you. They're helpful. Thank you.
Okay.
That's all I have. Thank you. Councilman Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I want to thank Mr. Smith for coming up. And listen, I'm a big bowler, I can take it, but to imply that I don't call people back, you know, that's, I think I've always called him back whenever he's asked for something. I will say that the information specifically from the Civic Association, old Kenner, is something that's been working on. It has not been expedited, and it's something we are dressed to not about going on. The other information, the request that he's asked, he's never asked me for that. That's never been submitted. This is the first time I've seen that. So rather than getting into that, that is not my style or my pace. And as he said himself, it's about going forward. He has my number, I have his number. I don't know when he says I don't call him back, but I won't get into that either. And I look forward to continuing the conversation.
Thank you.
And just to know that Mr. Smith does not speak for all of District 1. He may speak for one organization, but he doesn't speak for all of the district, and I just want everybody to know that, too. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Carroll. Councilman Wilmot. Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate, Councilman Carroll, I know you're digging into the issues, and that's not why I wanted to attend that meeting. The reason why, of course, it's brought up that the at-larges are also represent District 1, and that's the reason why. So no offense to you, sir. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. And that's what I want to do, is help support the issues and endeavors that are taking place, especially after seeing some photos. Thank you. That's all.
Okay, I have a motion to adjourn.
Now I have the longest council meeting ever.